Does it stand for the pleasure allegiance?
I tie back.
Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To make sure everybody silences their cell phones in the council tonight. Start with some letters of condolence. First in behalf of Mr. Erickson's family, Mr. Erickson served in the United States Navy during the Korean War. Also have a letter of condolence for Mr. Bernard G. Tarpe upon his passing on December 26, 2018. Mr. Tarpe served in the 2nd Infantry Division, 8th United States Army, United States Army during the Vietnam War. Lastly, the family of Paul R. Herman upon his passing on December 19, 2018. Mr. Herman served with combat engagements in the 4th Infantry Division, United States Army during the Vietnam War. Have a moment of silence to honor their passing. Thank you. Next, we approve last meeting, minutes from last meeting.
Motion to approve minutes.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We have no announcements from the President. No proclamations. Citizens, open forum. If anybody that would like to come up and say something, state your name and address, and we'll be glad to listen to you.
I'm Danielle Silva, 20, Tommy Ann Terrace. Good evening, President Haley, members of the Town Council, Mr. Dutton and Attorney Rollins. I'm here tonight as a parent of two children in the BR School District and as a teacher in another district. My main concern is the negative impact, the increase in larger class size in conjunction with the rising social and emotional needs of our students. The social emotional needs of our students is on the rise. I feel it's important to share the number of psychosocial health office visits for our district. These span from September 5th to January 15th. I'm going to compare from 2017-2018 school year to 2018-2019 school year. The psychosocial visits were 6,601, and then in 2018-2019, they were 7,283, an increase of 682. Mobile crisis, 9. 2018-2019, 26, an increase of 17. 911 calls for acute psychiatric crisis, 11. 2018-2019, 19. That's an increase of 8. After you hear the numbers like this, I know all of our immediate response is how can we help? Unfortunately, I know we were unable to level fund our school budget last year. However, as a result, I know meetings have taken place with Town Council and Schools Committee, and this is a step in the right direction. Thank you. But to further that step, I'm asking that you please consider level funding for the 2019-2020 school budget. In the words of Malcolm X, "Education is our passport to the future for tomorrow. It belongs to the people who prepare for it today." So let's prepare our kids for success to meet both their social and academic needs. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Lillian Holbrook, 45, Driftwood Drive. Good evening, President Haley, members of the Town Council.
Mr. Dutton.
And Mr. Rollins. I am here tonight not in the capacity of school committee member, but as a taxpayer, a resident, and retired educator. The emotional, the social emotional needs of our students will have a detrimental effect on our children if their needs are not addressed. I also feel it's important to share the alarming numbers of, for social emotional visits for the BR School community. But since Danielle so eloquently presented these numbers, I will just expand a bit by giving you a description of each of these areas. It's important to note that all of these numbers were taken for the corresponding time period of September 5th, 2017 to January 15th, 2018, and September 5th to January 15th, 2018-2019. So that way you know that we're comparing apples to apples. There was a 682 visit increase in psychosocial visits to the nurse. Psychosocial visits to the nurse are when a student has a complaint, which may include family problems, depression, anxiety, sexual abuse, violence, et cetera. There was a 17 call increase to mobile crisis. Mobile crisis calls are made if there is a situation in which a student experiences extreme emotional or behavioral distress, considering harm to himself or herself or to others, is disoriented or out of touch with reality, has a compromised ability to function, or is otherwise agitated and unable to be calmed down. And just as an aside, unfortunately, south of Brockton, mobile crisis, when you make a call to them, the students cannot be seen, or they won't come to the school, or they won't be seen unless they have mass help. There was an eight call increase to 911 for acute psychiatric crisis. Acute psychiatric calls are made if students exhibit significant and distressing symptoms of mental illness requiring immediate assessment and intervention. These numbers are alarming and shocking. In a recent 2018 Outlook survey, 71% of district leaders responded that they are very concerned regarding mental health issues in our schools. I'm very concerned the direction of our schools if we can't level fund our schools and the negative impact it will have on our students. Let's come together as a town for the good of our students. I'm asking that you please level fund the school district budget for FY '20. Thank you.
Thank you. I have the citizens for open comment. Okay, seeing none. Move to appointments. E appointments. First on appointments, Republican Town Committee.
Mr. President, can I, can I just make a correction to the agenda? I think on your agenda, it says we're making appointments to the Republican Town Committee. What you're actually doing is making appointments to the Board of Registars. The Republican Town Committee makes recommendations, and then I make the appointment and the council ratifies. So I just didn't want anybody to think that we were making appointments to the Republican Town Committee.
Thank you for the clarification. So this is an appointment to the Board of Registars.
Mr. President, can I just ask?
Yes, you may, Mr. Wood.
Clarification from the attorney, if we can do that. It seems okay with me, but I'd like to, of legal advice.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I think we just make a motion to modify the agenda. I think that the same general premise is advertised, so I don't think it's an open meeting issue, so I think we're fine.
I'd like to make a motion to adjust the agenda in that context.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So now, within that context.
I'd like to make a motion to approve both Sandra Wright and Joe Gillis to the Republican, Board of Registrations.
Board of Registars.
Sorry.
So Mr. Woods is making a motion to...
I'll second that.
Vote that ended up being seconded by Mr. Fitzgibbon's discussion.
What you meant for me?
Yes, Mr. George.
In the letter from Merrill Lee, it said to prevent both Joe and Sandy from terms ending simultaneously in three years, one of consider appointing one of them for two years and the other for three. So is that what we're voting on, or do they have to be of the same term?
Nope, they can be staggered terms. So I would propose Sandra Wright for one year, and I'd propose Joe Gillis for three years. They'll, they'll come back and be re-upped in, you know, during their respective ends of the staggered terms.
Okay. I just want to make sure everyone is aware of what we're voting on.
I'd make a motion to amend the appointment to specify the term, as Ms. Wright's being one year and Mr. Gillis being three years. Is that what the Town Manager indicated?
That is perfectly acceptable.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded for Ms. Wright for one, Mr. Gillis for three.
That's an amendment.
That's, you've made the amendment. Now we're motioning, voting on the motion. No?
Well, we should vote on the amendment, I believe.
Well, yeah. So, those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Now back to the main motion?
Yes, main motion that Mr. Wood and Mr. Fitzgibbon seconded in the discussion on the main motion.
Yeah, so I've known Mr. Gillis for a very long time. In fact, well before I actually became a resident of Bridgewater, I knew, I knew Joe. And Sandra Wright is, of course, a former councillor here on the, on the council, and we've known her for a number of years, and I find those, them both to be capable of executing this job that we're asking them to do.
Excellent, other comments? Well said, Mr. Wood. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we can move right into our hearings. So hearing number one at 7:46 for petition P219004. The petitioner would be... Is the petitioner in for Class II auto dealer's license?
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
My name's Wayne Richard. I'm applying for a Class II license. I'm a new business of town. We just opened up in November, sell auto detailing, window tinting at 1893 Old Plain Street. Old Plain Street, right? Yeah, Old Plymouth Street, sorry. And so we're just looking to contribute this to the part of the detailing. I have had a previous license in Marshfield, so...
Okay. Excellent. That's the first step of the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any questions from the public? Okay. Any public speaking in favor? Any public in opposition? Okay, now questions from the council.
One question.
One question.
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
So all of your work will be done inside, correct?
Correct.
All right, so no, no work will be done outside?
Nope.
No detailing, no cleaning?
Nope.
Okay.
Everything's done inside the building, and like I said, we're just looking to be able to sell cars at the same time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Selling cars, detailing, detailing cars and tinting windows?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Susan. There's an error here in the application. It says visitor's address of concern, 1893 Plymouth Street, East Bridgewater.
Yes, when I, when I first, we thought it was Plymouth.
We should correct that before we move on.
Script news error on the application.
Actually, on the application too, on page two, it's got East Bridgewater. 1893 Plymouth Street, East Bridgewater.
Yeah, second page, we just cut out the E.
So we've got...
Cut out the E here.
You see it?
Yep.
It is very close to East Bridgewater.
Second page and the fourth page.
It is close, yeah.
Everyone else wants to call Sees Bridgewater, when not East Bridgewater.
Unfortunately, that's what I was told it was when I started, so that's how I started it, and then when we did the above it was...
Do we have to remind you what time it was?
So I don't think that there's any parliamentary procedure we have to go through to fix the application. It's all perfectly fine. Any other questions or edits that the council would like to do?
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
So we close this hearing at 7:49.
Motion to grant the license?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to grant the license. So we would have a voice vote. And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, sir. Good luck. Okay, 7:49. Our next hearing for loan order for Elm Street Project, Order FY 19-041.
Mr. President, this, this is a loan order for Elm, the Elm Street Project. It's only because my computer just went on the blink, I don't have it in front of me. It's a $6.5 million project, the complete reconstruction of Elm Street. Obviously, we've talked about this quite a bit. We do have MassWorks grant that will offset $3 million of that. When we do the bond authorization, however, we go through and we do an authorization for the complete amount, and then any bonding is only done over and above the $3 million that we expend in addition to the MassWorks grant. So we authorize the entire amount. We will only end up borrowing a piece of that, roughly 3.5, if all the cost projections are in order.
Excellent. Anybody from the public speaking in favor? Or against? Town Council questions, any comments? Mr. Wood's leaning forward, but Mrs. Susan had his hand up pretty quickly. So, Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I will say that the Budget and Finance Committee met tonight and voted to recommend this favorably. Again, two, two very important points about this, as Mr. Dutton said, there is a separate item on our agenda tonight that is $3 million as a grant that will pay for a part, it sounds like almost half the project, but we do need to bond for the full project. And I'll, I'll remind the council also what we did a while ago. So we put in a program called DIF, and I don't remember what that stands for, but what that means is that for Elm Street, any new growth in assessment on that new growth will go, will offset the bond payment as, as a source of funding. And as, as we've seen, there's a large project in the works, so, you know, the, the effort to get that road into good shape has already started to pay benefits back. So the, so the cost of that project is actually offset by the property owners in that area plus the, the Mass Grant. Did I cover all the points correctly?
Sound good, Mr. Susan?
Yeah, it was, the agreement was that 50% of all new tax revenue generated from new construction would be allocated, so it can't go any other place but to pay for the loan. That's what we passed, council. And the second thing is, I was at the board, the planning board meeting the other evening, and, sorry, I was at the planning board meeting the other evening, and they approved the 300,000 square foot facility to be built.
Excellent. Other questions, Mr. Gallagher? You had a little lean forward for a minute there. No? Okay. Excellent. So I will, any other questions? None?
Excuse me?
Yes, Mr. Wood.
I was just wondering what the term of the loan would be?
Right now, we are looking at, I believe, a 15, 15-year bond on, on that street. Obviously, if, if the tax revenues come to better fruition than we're estimating, then there's the potential to pay it off early, but that's, that's what we're looking at right now.
Other questions from councillors? Okay. 7:53 closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. This requires a roll call vote.
Good discussion.
If you'd like to have a discussion, you can do that. Always, always open to that.
I would just like to commend the Town Manager for taking the initiative on this. This is sort of a project where public investment will yield private investment, and, you know, Elm Street has been ripe for reinvestment for a long time, but without the infrastructure improvements, it just couldn't happen. So it's a positive step.
Other question, other discussion? All states great also for the residences. Couple of people that have lived down there since I was a kid, and it was a bumpy road when I was a kid, few years ago. Was actually fun, you sit in the back of the bus. Good times. So it's gonna be great. Looking forward to it, and of course, it's gonna be great for business. I'm assuming there's no other discussion. So, closing and entertaining, 7:54 is the official closing and entertaining. Motion's already made. So back to the roll call. Ms. Holberg?
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
And Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, 7:55. Order FY 19042 for loan order for the First Street Project. So this hearing is now open.
Mr. President, this loan order for the First Street Project is a little bit in conjunction with Elm Street, to the extent that MassWorks is funding a small portion of the First Street Project, specifically the installation of sewer mains. And after that, which is roughly 148,000, I believe, of, of the total 1.2 million. So the balance of that, whatever is actually spent, expended from the appropriation and then bonded, will be paid back by the residents or the businesses on First Street as part of a betterment. So if you recall, the council passed an ordinance about private road improvements, and this is, this is one of the, obviously, the first exercise of that ordinance, and, and so we're looking forward to having this completed roughly the same time as Elm Street is completed for the entire roadway system in that industrial district.
Thank you. General questions from the public in regard to the First Street Project? Those speaking in favor? Public speaking against? Hearing and seeing none. Questions from Town Councillors? Hearing and seeing none. One thing, this is that street on the left when you go up Elm Street.
Yes, correct. It's the street that juts off to the left, towards the west, and then curves around and heads north, sort of parallel to Elm Street.
Basically, the main road in that little industrial park.
Right.
Okay. Which isn't in any better shape than Elm Street itself, so this is, this is really good. Okay. No other comments, I believe? Excellent. 7:57. Close that hearing and entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussions?
Once again, the Budget and Finance Committee met tonight to discuss this, and we recommend three to nothing to approve.
Other discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Close that hearing, motion made. Let's make, roll call vote to approve.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. 7:57 for the next hearing. FY 19-046, the adoption of a five-year capital plan.
And, Mr. President, this five-year capital plan is something that I will get up here on the screen momentarily. It has been developed with the Finance Department's guidance and the participation of all of the, all of the department heads over the course of the last several months. We have long awaited this. It's the first time we've put all of our capital needs, or as best that we can figure, all of our capital needs into one document, and I will show you that document as it comes up. You want to just introduce while I get the?
Yeah.
Introduce it, and I'll get the actual document up here?
So as the Town Manager was saying, we've been working over the last several months in compiling this. We've been working over the last seven, several months to compile this. What we, we still have some work to do, which will be done over the next few months. The only component of the plan that you have before you that we are still compiling is the information that we've just gotten from the street scan process that we've gone through. That's the scanning of our roads and sidewalks. We're looking at that and now trying to come up with a priority listing. That, that system is, is highly functional in that it gives an index to the quality of the road, and we will put in an amount that we think we can afford to potentially borrow, and it will actually identify what roads would be prioritized first. So once we go through that exercise, we will update the debt exclusion portion of the capital plan to be more aligned to what we see coming forward. The capital plan itself has an overview section and then breaks down all the items from now into 2023, and then there are subsequent documents that explain the process, what a capital improvement plan is all about, how the process has worked so far, and, and then there are sub-schedules that look at the different funding mechanism for the various components of this capital plan. The summary page, as you're looking now, shows a graphic to the left, a pie chart, which actually will identify how we propose certain capital expenditures, excuse me, capital requirements are, are funded. That is a brief overview. I'll, I'll turn it over to the Town Manager.
Thank you for filling in. I would just go back, and the capital funds, as, as the council knows, are generated primarily through free cash and the allocations that, that you have set up under your free cash policy. So we've, under that policy, we've got five major guidelines for the use of free cash. One is to meet the stabilization fund balance goals, and if you'll recall, 5% to 10% of our operating budget, we want to allocate to stabilization so that we can weather, specifically so that we can weather the next economic downturn with as minimal impact to operations as possible. We also have to meet certain retirement separation benefits, basically sick buyback is the term that we've been using. We also, and this is, this document proposed to fund capital improvement programs, and finally meet one-time or unforeseen expenditures or emergency appropriations through the use of free cash, and also our other obligations, specifically OPEB, other post-employment benefits funding, which is, is a very substantial liability to the town at this point. So within that framework, Tony and the finance team have put together a document that you can look at. It'll give you, as Tony mentioned, a little bit of context about how we propose to spend. It gives you a pie chart. I won't, you know, bother reading this. You can certainly read it. It'll be on the website, and you can read it as, as you wish. I will point out that later on this evening... I will point out that, uh, later on this evening or, or next, I guess is the, uh, is, uh, some of the, um, appropriation, uh, orders, um, that, that we are asking, um, and those are orders for specific funds out of capital stabilization. They're not any decision, uh, to put debt exclusions on. As you can see from the pie chart here, we're proposing, um, roughly four point five percent in debt exclusion, uh, almost exclusively for roads. So, so that is in the offing, but that is not, uh, what's in front of you tonight. So a lot of, uh, frequently asked questions about capital improvement plans. It's a five-year plan. It's designed to be flexible so that when, um, other urgent needs come up, we can adapt, uh, fairly quickly on a year-to-year basis. So you'll see changes, um, next year's proposed spending will probably not look like it looks in this year's, uh, capital plan. Uh, may look a little different just depending on the priorities and, um, and the urgencies that, that, uh, exist a year from now. How do we define, um, capital, uh, assets or capital projects? Very basically, um, we're looking at, um, at a twenty-five thousand dollar aggregate value, um, to push something into the capital improvement plan, um, versus, um, keeping it as, as a budget item, uh, or, or a one-time item. What's the difference between the improvement program and the capital budget? I think that's fairly self-explanatory. The, uh, improvement program is simply the five-year, uh, projection and the work that the, a product of the work of the Finance Department. The charter does, uh, call for its acceptance by the council, um, but that's really all it is. It's an acceptance and acknowledgement that, that those capital, uh, items are out there, um, and that, uh, and that they, you know, will have to be funded at some point. Where the rubber hits the road is the, the capital budget. And that's, that's where, um, the, the vote, your vote, actually appropriates the funds to cover, uh, one particular, this year's, uh, capital needs. So honestly, uh, why do we need a capital improvement program? We need to know, uh, in a multi-year projection, what expenses we're looking at down the road. And it's townwide, it's all-town assets. Um, we, we try to make sure that, uh, we've done, uh, a fairly thorough job in compiling the capital needs, um, in conjunction with all of the department heads. And, uh, and that, uh, is critical because, um, you know, we need to make sure that water and sewer, even though it's an enterprise fund, they have significant capital needs. But we have to make sure that those capital, um, improvements are done in conjunction with our roadways department, who's going to be responsible for, uh, maintaining the roads, uh, over which, um, the capital improvements for water and sewer probably are going to be made. So, um, you know, we don't want to be in the position where we're, uh, putting down a new road and then, um, a year and a half later, we're digging up the new road to replace the water pipes. That's, that's, uh, municipal government at its worst. And so that's, that's sort of the primary concern and that's why we, uh, do an exhaustive job making sure that everybody is well aware of, of the plan, uh, over a multi-year period. So how does the capital, uh, program, uh, capital improvement program save the town money? It's really just a matter of, of streamlining as much as we can and making sure that we plot out, uh, our purchases as wisely as possible so that we're not, um, not wasting, uh, the taxpayers' money. To the extent that we do a good job on our capital improvement program, uh, it means an increase, uh, in our bond rating. An increase in our bond rating means a decrease in the, in the interest that we need to pay, uh, on our bonds that we float, uh, to make capital improvements. So it's, it's, uh, the better your bond rating, uh, the better your interest rate, uh, and the cheaper it is for, for taxpayers. So we do a lot of work on this, um, uh, and in the long run, it, uh, streamlines the process, uh, certainly, and it, and it saves money on the, on the interest side, um, of the equation. How are capital projects financed? They are financed through, uh, the stabilization, capital stabilization fund that you were, uh, good enough to set up for us. So our, the primary source of, uh, the money that flows into that, uh, originates as free cash. So we don't have, um, a, a separate source of funds and a capital budget that, um, is independent of, um, um, free cash. So the free cash that you, you allocate, portion of that goes into the capital stabilization, um, and, and is used as one source of the funds. So we have other sources, multiple sources of funds, um, right across the town that can be used for, to fund capital items. And we, uh, some of those are more restricted in how we can use them. So those will fund, um, you know, specific items, um, and then we'll use capital stabilization for other items. We will use grant funding. We have a number of items on our capital plan that are dependent upon, uh, state grant funding, federal grant funding, um, so we will use that as well. Every once in a while, there'll be an item that requires a debt exclusion. And I think people are fairly familiar, certainly the council knows, uh, what a debt exclusion is. A debt exclusion is, um, something, uh, essentially akin to a mortgage. The, the voters go out and they approve a borrowing, uh, of a certain amount of money and then they pay the, the bond or they pay the, the money back over a period of time. And when they're done paying it, then the, the taxes, the, the amount we have to raise for that, uh, bond issue, uh, drops so that, that, um, you know, you pay, you only pay for, for the item that you're purchasing and then the, then the taxes, those taxes, uh, that are allocated to that disappear and, and are reduced. So those are very basically the ways that, that we pay for capital, uh, projects. I won't go over the timeline, but, um, you can read the timeline and it's, it's, uh, you know, almost a year-round process, uh, developing the capital improvement, uh, capital, uh, improvement program. And as I mentioned, uh, why it's continually updated, um, just as new capital needs come in, um, and others are retired or others are, the capital need may disappear for some items, so that those will come off. So in a nifty flow chart, um, you can see department heads submit their requests, uh, we review them, uh, we develop, uh, a, a proposed plan, which is what's in front of you now. Town council approves. That's a really good picture of the town council there. So might be better than the one you took tonight.
Anne is also in that depiction. There's nine councilors and Anne.
There's ten people in the picture.
Remember, Michael, we're Bridgewater, not East.
Never gonna live that down. In any case, uh, then, then once the council approves, we get to work on, on, uh, on funding, uh, with either current tax revenues or borrowed funds or, or wherever the funding source comes from. And then, uh, and then we get to the point where we're actually doing a project. So it's, it is a, it's a lengthy process. Quite frankly, it's good that it's a lengthy process because projects become very well-vetted. And, uh, and I can certainly give you examples of, of monies that have been spent, um, by cities and towns over the years that have, have not been spent well. But it, it did seem like a very urgent need at the time. And, um, and so we make sure that it's a fairly robust process. We make sure that the department heads can, can articulate the need for specific, uh, capital items very, very, uh, very, very, very well. Well, I won't, I won't dig into the nitty-gritty here. So what you're looking at, um, is, uh, the first page of the detailed capital plan. You can see we've accounted, uh, there's a funding code, uh, and that's the different sources of funds that, that we are proposing to be used. In twenty, well, you see the first items are twenty-twenty items. That's when we're, uh, projecting either twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, uh, the need to fund, uh, the Mitchell School, uh, project. Below that, uh, we've got memorial building improvements, um, for twenty-nineteen. And then I'll go down the list because you'll have the funding, uh, order that's coming up. But there are a number of smaller items that we're looking to do this year, um, as, uh, as part of the capital plan. Uh, I won't go over that with you other than, that's, uh, a, a good, uh, spreadsheet. I know you probably can't read it. But it's a good spreadsheet to show that, um, for instance, um, ambulance, a four-year ambulance, um, I'm sorry, yeah, four-year ambulance lease. You can spread that out. It's actually five-year lease, I believe. But that's spread out over the course. So you can see we've laddered out these purchases to make sure that, um, that, uh, you know, we can, we can have a predictable, uh, both with police and, and fire, we can have a predictable, uh, cost as we move, move forward and project out. Again, writing's too small for people to see. But, but this shows, um, the DPW. So we've got the Oak Bridge, uh, Oak Street Bridge Repair, uh, still, still out there. We're scheduling that in for twenty-twenty-one. We've got improvements that we know we have to make to the, the Highway Barn. We've got, uh, Vernon Street and South Street, uh, drainage that has to be done. We know that based on, on what the council saw, uh, last fall. And we've got some equipment needs. Um, and again, um, you know, we're trying to ladder those out, um, and, and do that through a lease, uh, program that's predictable, um, over, over the course of four or five years. We've got a number of pedestrian safety, um, projects built in here. If those, uh, go well, we'll coincide those with the completion of, um, complete, uh, not complete streets, we'll do them in conjunction with the complete street, streets program. But we'll also, uh, time those accordingly so that we're looking at, um, projects, um, that we can do pursuant to the current, uh, transportation engineering that's going on. Whoops. We've got other, um, traffic safety improvements, mostly signals, uh, pedestrian crossings and, and so forth. Again, all in conjunction with, uh, the engineering work that's going on now. And these are, uh, again, some of the more minor, uh, items. We know, uh, for instance, the library, uh, will need a new roof. We're looking at twenty-twenty-one, we're looking at doing some, uh, parking lot repaving. Obviously people that frequent the library know that, uh, this time of year particularly the, the entrance is, uh, is, can be kind of brutal. So we've got, uh, some work that we know we have to do there. Parks and Rec, um, again, uh, we've got some, some work to do there. And so this, I, I guess the detail is to show you that, that we've tried to account for as much as possible. The funding codes, um, that, the bottom lines, you know, the eight million, um, the ninety-six million, the twelve million, so on and so forth, over, uh, the course of, uh, the next five years, uh, don't all come, uh, out of free cash, obviously. They don't all come out of debt exclusion. There's, there are multiple funding sources. The one that, uh, that will probably take a good chunk, uh, are debt exclusions over the next couple of years. So we'll be allocating, uh, um, the school, uh, Mitchell School and the, uh, and certainly roads are necessary debt exclusions. But we'll, we'll, uh, get to those when, when those, uh, we get to those. So what Tony's done is he's put together, uh, the detailed capital plan by funding source. And I just mentioned the debt exclusion. So, so here, uh, are some of the proposals that we're looking to do debt exclusions on. I mentioned, um, yeah, so we have done just some, you know, gross estimates on, on Mitchell School reconstruction. We've done some gross estimates, uh, on, um, on, um, parking lots and, and the library and then the town lot. So we've got, we've got a number of items there. But again, this is just sort of the five-year projection on, on where we may have to go on, on debt exclusions. And this is a little more detail on capital plan by funding source. And again, so there's, there's, uh, capital plan by funding source. This is the ambulance receipts. This is what will fund, uh, the ambulances and this is the way that, uh, the fire department, the chief and, and our finance director have worked out, uh, to, to try to balance and even out, uh, the expenditures as, as best possible over the, over the next five or six years. So this is, uh, these are the other sources other than the, um, the ones I had mentioned. So, uh, there are multiple funding sources for, for many of these. Many of these are state grant funds, um, that, that we intend to, uh, seek. A lot of these are, um, you know, the Elm Street roadway improvements are on here. Obviously that, uh, as, as councilors have mentioned, that's a, a district, um, infrastructure financing arrangement. But we reflected it here, even though, uh, it's already been sort of paid for and authorized. So, but we want to make, as I mentioned, we want to make sure we're as thorough as possible with this plan. And so I, I, I guess I would, uh, only end this, uh, piece, uh, by telling you that, um, you know, this is really the first time we've done as robust a capital plan, um, as, as you see here. I don't believe it's ever been done before. It's a, it's a daunting, uh, document when you look at the total expenses. But I think when, when you really sit down and, and you chew it over and you, and you figure out and prioritize what your needs are, um, it, those daunting, uh, tasks and those daunting, uh, dollar figures become much more manageable, uh, when they're in the context of, uh, of, of everything that Tony's presented here. And that, without going through the minutia, um, I'm happy to answer questions and Tony's here to, uh, certainly answer questions. I don't know if he has anything else to add other than what I've.
Okay, so we'll go first to, uh, questions from the general public. Any of the public in, speaking in favor? Any speaking against? And now we'll move to the councilors, questions from the town council. Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Dutton, and thank, Mr. Tony for putting this together because we, we met, and the Budget and Finance Committee met before this to go over it and I think it's a great plan. I think it's good to see a capital plan, whether we can afford everything going down the road is, is one issue. As things come before us as a, to the council for approval, um, you know, they may get tweaked here and there, but, um, I'm, I think, uh, the work that's been done is, is, is great, uh, for the taxpayers to see where some of the money that we're, we've been, um, fortunate enough to putting stabilization funds is, is gonna go towards keeping, keeping the buildings, um, sound and safe and so we don't run into major projects down, down the road. My, my question though would be is what plan can we see going forward to address some of the actual roads in the town? Obviously the money we get from chapter seventy monies does not, um, meet that objective. So we have to, we do have a lot of work to do on our roads. We all know that. So how could the capital, um, stabilization funds help us, uh, down the road or in the next cycle or so forth, uh, address the roads in the town? How, how can that help us?
That's a great question. I think the, the adoption of the plan at least, uh, puts us in the right direction. But really when the rubber hits the road, no pun intended, um, when the rubber hits the road, it's a matter of dollars that we can expend on, on road, uh, maintenance and road reconstruction. So, um, one of the things as a policy, internal operational policy that we've adopted is, uh, we are gonna try what we can to make sure that, um, that the, um, chapter ninety funds, uh, are used really for their intended purpose. And that's the maintenance and, and upkeep of the existing road, uh, infrastructure. When it comes to complete, uh, rebuilding of roads and the complete replacement of roads, those really have to be a town obligation. So, um, you can see, uh, it's a, it's sort of, um, you know, uh, you know, a very significant, uh, and very, um, blunt, um, example, but, uh, the, the, uh, funding for the drainage and, and the reconditioning and the rebuilding of, of the two streets, that we don't. that we don't see any other option other than a debt exclusion on those two. Uh, moving forward, you know, the, the, the less major, um, road, uh, rebuilding efforts, um, we're going to have to figure out. And that's, that's why we've got professionals handling, handling our finances. We're going to have to figure out, uh, and propose to the council, you know, some unique funding, uh, methods there.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Loesch.
I just have two questions. One, on the street lighting. I vaguely remember some, um, Bridgewater getting funding or to help with that project. Is what's listed here, um, inclusive of after we receive the help?
So what's?
Or the grant?
So you've ju, you've sort of jumping ahead, stealing my thunder, but that's quite all right. On the, um, you're looking at the, the actual appropriation or the council order that actually funds 2019 capital plan. So you'll see on there, um, the amount of a hundred and ten, I believe it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, for the street lighting, the conversion to LED. That is what we, at the time that this was drafted, that's what we were predicting would be the amount that we would have to, uh, fill. The gap that we would have to fill between the amount we've already spent, um, the green communities grant funding that we expect to receive, uh, and then, you know, the completion of the project. So, so a hundred and ten is, is, uh, what we think is the worst-case scenario. And we're hoping that actually grant, other grant funding will offset that as well. But because we're on it, I would point out that, uh, we also expect, you know, to receive, uh, a very significant amount of money, uh, back. Well, we won't be expending a significant amount of money on electrical costs, uh, because of that conversion.
Okay. And then my follow-up is, um, we all received an email from a very astute, um, resident about our other parks and rec. I said we have a lot of rec, but I, I don't see anything in the capital plan as far as the parks. Is there a plan for that?
Uh, we do have, uh, we would, we, yes. Well, I should split that answer into two, yes and no. Right now, uh, we're going through a budget process, operating, operational budget process. And I, I know of the, the email that you speak of, and that, uh, was very eloquent and very accurate. Uh, we're trying to find a way to, to at least fund a little bit of money, uh, for, for the more passive recreation, uh, improvements that we need or maintenance, I should say, just park, park cleanup and maintenance. That will be a challenge. But on the, uh, on the capital side, uh, we're looking at, um, certain property purchases that we would be making with grant funding, uh, in conjunction with community preservation, uh, funding. So that, that's on the capital side though.
Okay. I didn't see anything for passive, so maybe we can connect offline and show me where that is listed.
So the funding mechanism, what the funding, what you see in front of you as a, as a capital order are the, are the funds that we need the council to vote, um, right now. The other, the other, um, capital purchases, the property purchases will come through the CPA process. So you will vote on that, but it'll, it'll come through a different process.
Okay.
Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, Mr. Dutton, I just had a question with respect to the, um, the drainage, uh, improvements to be undertaken on Vernon Street and, and South Street. And, uh, which on the, in, in the first place is, is good to see that they have been prioritized in the manner they have, uh, for more or less immediate attention. And I think that certainly is consistent with the comments that, uh, you made when you first presented that dilemma to the council. I'm curious, since, since these, uh, costs, and we're looking at, um, uh, three point eight billion dollars, estimated for the two projects. Since this cannot be allocated by means of, uh, Chapter 90 funds, uh, and it will require a debt exclusion, is, is there, is there any kind of baseline calculation we can make to gauge the impact on the taxpayers?
Oh, absolutely. Before, before we would ever actually begin that, that process, we would get, we certainly would get that information out to people so that they had a very clear.
Obviously, I know it, it, it's going to, it's going to revolve around the, uh, uh, the rate we get for, for the bonding and other costs associated with that. But, um, I think that at the earliest point, since that is a prioritized matter, I think that at the earliest point that we can have some, um, reasonable guesstimate as to what the impact would be. I think that, uh, there'd be a, a great interest in, in learning that.
No, I, I agree completely, agree completely. So once, um, once we have a plan in place to approach that, um, and we know that it includes, uh, a possible debt exclusion vote, then absolutely, uh, we get, we'll get that information out as quick as possible. Uh, thank you.
First, Mr. Souza, then I believe Mr. George will follow. Mr. Souza.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dutton, back to the parks. Okay. Recently during our conversation, we discussed a, uh, state grant for, uh, construction and repair of, of walkways in our parks. Is that going anywhere? Is that still out there?
We have, uh, we have two grant funding possibilities. You, you had actually brought me one that unfortunately had, um, uh, the grant, uh, application period had, had expired, I believe, back in, I'm not sure, it was December. Can't remember. But, uh, the good news is we've got two possibilities, uh, for grant funding for, to offset the purchase and, um, development of, of walkways. The grant you had mentioned will come back around. So, you know, about six months from now, we'll, we'll look again for that, that grant to pop up again. Uh, but in terms of purchase funding, uh, we're looking at a grant for that. And then, and then the initial, uh, improvements, uh, that we need to make, we're looking at a separate grant for that. So, so we're, we're on a good course, but the one that you had mentioned, we'll, we'll, we know that one and we'll, we'll be after that.
It, it was just funny because that thing came in the paper the day before. Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
February.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was December. I think it was the end of December, but I can't, I'm not positive.
Mr. George.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Dutton, so in the last page of the order, you have on here at the writing, debt service projections and metrics were not finalized, yet finalized, but conservative preliminary estimates prepared by the town manager indicate the program will be well within the guidelines set forth in the credit standing and affordability. Can you expand on what that is to educate the people on what the guidelines are?
So I'll let Tony explain that. I'll make a mangled mess of that.
It's really, um, one, our, uh, maximum borrowing capacity. So if we look at what we have before us, we still have, uh, a gap between what we are currently borrowing and what our maximum borrowing capacity is, which is over a hundred and, roughly a hundred and forty million dollars, let's say, based on our equalized value. As far as our standing, um, what's different about Moody's and Standard and Poor's when it relates to our, uh, uh, rating? It's not like, uh, the homeowner, whereas if I have X amount of debt, um, that gets calculated into like my credit score. They don't look at that. They look at how you're going to be funding and paying for that. So if you're, you're funding that within your, a balanced budget, they'll look at it one way from your ability to provide your services. We would be recommending outside of that, so it's a debt exclusion and therefore your ability to pay is, is based on your taxation. And therefore the revenue that you collect is secured by your ability to lean on a property. So therefore the risk, uh, and, and paying that, uh, is not considered in their calculation. So basically, um, there's enough room for us to address a number of our major needs. Obviously, this, the, the school work that needs to get done is a, is a very important factor and all that. But we will be going through, I think the question was, what's the cost to the taxpayer? When we finish the, the working with the road information, as I alluded to at the beginning of this, we're going to put together a impact to the tax rate. And one component of that will be with this, if you think about it this way, a, a town the size of Bridgewater, like your home, you will have major repairs that are going to require probably borrowing along the way. Roof, maybe a major mechanical changes, maybe a major update and repair. Well, we need to look at what the ongoing, um, uh, need to maintain our af, assets and our infrastructure is going to be. And we're going to try to come up with a delta which says, on an ongoing basis, we're going to need X amount to raise in taxes in order to help maintain, I mean, best case scenario, you're maintaining your infrastructure at a, at a rate that makes sense. Uh, that it can provide the services and it can be safe, uh, the infrastructure and, and your buildings. So whether that's a dollar, uh, on the tax rate, whether it's two dollars on the tax rate, you're going to have an equation that says we have to maintain, uh, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, a hundred million dollars worth of assets. What's a fair plan in order to fund the maintenance and repair to those assets? And of course, it's a heck of a lot more than what I just described. That's where it gets daunting because you start to realize, hmm, do we have the revenue stream? And can the taxpayer afford the revenue stream that it's going to take to take care of four hundred million dollars worth of assets?
Okay. So, and thank you for that. So in all, all the simplification, correct me if I'm wrong, is for the funding source for this capital plan, improvement plan, is going to be based on two factors. One is revenue. And the other is debt exclu, debt exclusion that you proposed down the road for there. Those are the, those are the two. So if we go through that and we stay within the projections, there'll be no need to tap into any of the, the reserves that we have. Is that true?
Into our stabilization fund, which we have five point two million dollars in right now?
Correct.
The answer is yes. I have a funding schedule where I project, and it's tied into the budget resolution that you folks passed, which I commend. And I, and, and that's just not blowing smoke. It really says we're going to have a surplus so that we can put money aside every year for our capital. So I've done a, you know, five, six, seven-year forecast on that. And with those one-time revenues that come in, which you're voting on to move to certain funding, it's like says the capital stabilization and an influx of free cash on an annual basis. Uh, we, we, we can support through capital stabilization what's been depicted in the capital plan that you have for, for you. That all said, the major construction projects, brick and mortar and your roadway infrastructure and so forth, that's where the debt exclusion comes in.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood.
Thank you. A couple of questions. So, so I'd like to remind everybody that this is a plan. This piece is a plan. The one two, two spaces down on the agenda is actually an implementation of, of a part of the plan. This is actually, again, one of the best improvements I've seen over the past five, six, seven years that we actually get to project out a number of, number of years. So my, my question, first question, it's really directed at town manager and finance director, which is, um, the council is responsible for the budget process. And so some of these items are driven by many different factors. But what is the best way for the council to communicate to the finance area the desire to have something pushed up or pushed back on the plan? Because like, let's, let's pick one, um, the Dog Park is 2023, right? So let's say there's an incentive to move it up to 2021. What is the best way for, for us as a body to communicate to the, to the executive branch as it, as it is? And, and move that around on the plan without going through an amendment, although that's possible. But, um, but for future items, how, how do we communicate?
I think, I think, um, certainly, you know, if the, if the council wanted to do that, um, and that's, that's certainly your prerogative, I would, I would, I don't know that it requires an amendment, but certainly, um, you know, some sort of vote, um, indicating the sense of the council, whether it's a resolution. Certainly if the council, or an order or resolution, you know, we certainly take those, uh, seriously. And, and we would, you know, figure out a way, knowing the sense of the council, that if, if that, to use that example, um, if the council wanted the Dog Park in 2020 versus 2021, um, you know, then we would, we would do what we could to, to juggle, uh, the balance of the plan so that we could make that work.
So I think what I'm going to do for next year's budget resolution, since we have a recurring plan now, every year we get a five-year plan. I think of the budget resolution, the best thing, because that's usually October, is to identify things that we might want to move around or suggest that the, that the group move around in plans so that when we get to this point, it's organized in that fashion with the backing of the council. Sound good? Second, second question is, so this is the town's capital budget plan. But the, uh, district also has a five-year capital plan, which I had a copy from last year. I don't know if I have a current copy. But it has items on it that, that are related to building and, and the shared building, the high school, that are not on our plan. I'll give you one example so we can talk about it. So the football field is on the district's capital plan at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a replacement that they expect to see. The, the longevity of a football field in the art, with the artificial turf that we have is about 10 years. We're at that mark now. Mr. Fox said back in the fall that the metric that they used to measure is at one seventy out of two hundred. So we can probably anticipate that there will be an ask sometime in the next coming, coming few years anyway, to replace that. And of course, that's a shared resource, so the burden wouldn't be completely on Bridgewater. But how do we reconcile the district's capital plan with the town's, uh, plan? And get those items in, in so that when we talk about debt exclusion or other funding sources, that that's part of the overall plan?
I think to the extent that we know, uh, what, what the district is thinking, we'll plug that into our plan. That's obviously, uh, and a very important piece because, uh, you know, by far the majority, other than, the majority of buildings in town that require our care or construction are, are school-related. So we, we, for those that don't know, we, uh, own our elementary schools. The district owns, uh, the high school, so that's a district asset. But ultimately, we're responsible for the upkeep, um, well, not the upkeep, we're responsible for the capital, upgrades of, of the schools that we own. So, so to the extent that we know, um, about those, uh, we will plug those into our capital plan, um, and make those part of it. And, uh, so it's really just a matter of making sure that we know, you know, what, what's on, uh, the district's five-year plan so that we can plug that in.
So does this plan have that integration? I saw the Mitchell, but other pieces from the district's plan?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Colanvotos.
I'm, uh, thank you. I'm glad Mr. Wood raised that point about, um, how the council might provide input to this plan. It's good to know that it's, it's not a binding, it's a plan. It's conceptual plan. It's not binding. If we approve it tonight does not mean we're approving these specific, uh, recommendations. One thing I want to call attention to was the, the funding of pedestrian and bicycle improvements. The major, vast majority are pushed out to 2024. And I'm, I'm a little concerned about that, given that, um, as we, as our complete street prioritization plan outlines, these sorts of improvements, improved access to pedestrian travel, can provide a tremendous return, um, to the, to the town in terms of public-private investment. So I'm wondering, um, what the rationale was for pushing those, those allocations out to 2024. Perhaps, uh, just a broad answer. I mean, we're not going to get into the details.
Yeah, the broad answer is that it's going to record, uh, require alternative funding sources. At least that's how we originally had identified that, so that we would, we will be looking for, uh, straight state grant funding. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Town?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. I, you know, that, that's usually, um, I think we, to the extent we are looking for tip funding for those, um, that's a, that's probably a three or four-year process. And, um, in order to get there, we were, you need to have your engineered plans. So we're going through a process now that will give us, um, you know, 25% plans on, on some solutions. And then after that, we're looking at, at that funding. If we had, uh, that's a great example, though. And, and maybe just as a way of explaining how the capital plan can change. If we had, um, somebody come in, say a developer came in and wanted to redevelop, uh, in the opportunity zone, we would probably, uh, require, and they wanted to take advantage of our current zoning, we may require them to, to, uh, improve sidewalks, improve pedestrian access. So all of a sudden, you know, some of those could be pushed right up to 2020, uh, ideally. But, but I think that's the, the, on those ones specifically, the, the, uh, some of the, um, those were assuming that, uh, they would be a combination of tip and, and complete streets funded.
So just the process takes longer. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fiskous.
Yeah, just a few questions. Do you anticipate coming to the council and asking for a debt exclusion vote in 2019 on anything? Other than what we know about from the school, obviously.
I would like to say that we'll be prepared to do, well, 20, the schools, at least on the current schedule, the schools, schools won't be coming to you in 2019. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, November, yeah. October, November. Yeah. I'm still in East Bridgewater.
Need to work on that.
We, I would love to say that we are prepared to go out right now to try to do that. But we don't, we're not prepared to go out and do that right now. So I'm going to guess that, that we won't see that street vote in 2019, calendar year 2019.
Okay, and, um, you know, I see here from my DP annual report that they're in either building a new school or adding on to it. And, you know, we need to make sure we account for that as well as part of the whole capital project, because, you know, obviously, we get assessed from them as well. And just to refresh my memory, we owe about $35 million on OPEB, Tony? Approximately?
Uh, yes.
So we're in debt $35 million to OPEB before we even start anything, okay? And by the way, thank you so much for having all these projections out and having the models that you have, because it's so helpful for me to look at it and not think year to year about, okay, well, what do we have, what do we have, and what are we gonna have? We, we, we know what we've got for the next several years. So this, you know, as Mr. Wood said, is, is just a great way to layer things out and understand where the money's coming from and everything like that. So I certainly appreciate your efforts on that. Thank you.
Any other councilors have some questions? Okay, great. So eight forty-six, close this and entertain a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion?
I, I will say once again that we actually saw a preview of the plan, I don't know, long, quite a while ago, in the Budget Finance Committee. And then tonight, we formally voted to recommend approval of the plan.
Anyone else have other discussion? Okay, and I believe that is another roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colomodos?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Excellent. Now at eight forty-seven, moving on to order FY19-047 for the 2019 capital plan funding. This silly hearing is now open for that. Against Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. President, this, this order is the culmination of our discussion that we just had. And is this year's 2019's partial, 2019's appropriation from the, mostly from capital stabilization in order to fund the items that are most pressing. So as, as Tony mentioned, we'll be coming to you with an order here and then other orders pursuant to some of the other items on the, on the 2019 list that are funded in different ways. So I mentioned CPC as, as an example. So let me walk you very quickly through this. Source of funds, for the most part, capital stabilization and, and the, what we commonly refer to as prison mitigation fund, which is different than the prison mitigation money that we get. But this, this will actually clean out the balance of the, the original, I think it was a $3 million and change prison mitigation fund that was set up when, when the DOC expanded, which is what my understanding is of the source of that money. But in any case, those funds are going towards building maintenance plan. We're, we're going to hire a consultant to give us a thorough capital needs assessment of our, our town buildings. We've got software, board doc software that will allow us to give you and other boards in town materials without the printing and the, and the contortions that the council clerk and the other support staff go through. Full circle, the permitting upgrade and software upgrade in, in the building office. We've got a little bit of money for the assessor's work and the property reval. We've got Munis implementation money in there. Got some IT upgrades, network switch, wireless network upgrades, computer upgrades, fiber optic repairs for, for 10 poles that were damaged last summer on Bedford Street. Got utility billing, conversion fees, one-time fees. We've got voting tables and office equipment in the, for the, the town clerk's office, as well as voting pole pads and thermal printers that are, that are required. And we're also purchasing a warranty on, on those, that equipment. We've got the front face of, of the building department permitting software, which is something that we've talked about quite a bit, just helping people walk through their, their process and identifying how, how they get the permits that they're required to get. Police department has two marked cruisers, which is regular rotation. The ambulance, fire department has a number of ambulance items, equipment items, a stair chair, stretchers, certain turnout gears, another vehicle, that's a replacement vehicle. Got a lease payment on DPW truck plow combo and a lease payment on the sidewalk plow. Also, the DPW has in for a mini excavator and trailer and a roadside mower in order to, to get their work done. So we've got some pedestrian signal work at Pleasant Street, around the Town Common and Pleasant and Center Street, all as part of this particular order. I've got sidewalk, Street Logic, the addendum for that. Council Loesch pointed out the $110,000 for streetlight conversion. And then the senior center has a need to upgrade their electrical panel to accommodate the, the mobile generator. The senior center pickleball courts, the fencing is in there for that, which is actually a project that hasn't begun yet, but, but the fencing is in there. That'll completely round out their funding. And then the Parks and Rec building is in need of a number of repairs. And then finally, we, there are a couple of just cleanup items there for minor amounts for the ambulance lease and lease of plow number two to DPW. So all of that adds up to $1,164,334.79.
Any general questions from the public? Those in, any questions, are people, public speaking in favor? Public speaking against? And now questions from the town council. One question, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, it's probably to Tony. Replace two marked cruisers through the, in the, in the police. Didn't we used to have a revolving fund for that? And why wouldn't we be using funds out of that as a source of funds?
The, there is a revolving fund, but the receipts that are going into that revolving fund take several years to even equate to the value of one mock cruiser. And also the cost of the mock cruises with their fully loaded, and this is fully loaded with all the technology and lights and painting, has, has grown. So that's used more for repair and maintenance of the mock cruisers now.
Thank you. And then this is probably to Mr. Allens. Given that we're voting on prison mitigation money moving, do we really need like a nine tenths instead of a two thirds vote on this?
But my understanding, based on what Mr. Dutton said, was this wasn't truly the prison mitigation.
No, this is the prison mitigation fund, the predigation, prison mitigation money that we have been receiving through the supplemental budget is, is something different. That's not a nice, so this, this I believe would be the nine tenths vote.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Closing the hearing at eight fifty-four, entertaining a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, additional discussion?
Just, if I may, just that this is, as we said, this is the implementation of the, of a portion of the plan that we just talked about. Last year or the year before, if you recall, we made adjustments to the plan and changed a couple items. Again, you know, if we want to do that, a review and execution of communication of some sort in advance would probably be a good idea. This is different than the budget resolution, because this is actually implementation. And so this is, when we hold the town manager to a set of goals, these are part of the goals to get these things done. So our expectations should be the money should be spent and the project should be finished. Thank you. Oh, I should also say that, again, the committee voted three to zero to recommend this to full town council.
Excellent, other discussion? Did I hear that this won't be two thirds, but it'll be?
Nine tenths.
Nine tenths, so. Is there a parliamentary procedure for referencing that in some different way?
Everybody.
We'll, we'll just count and figure, do the math after. So now we go over to Ann to take the roll call.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colomodos?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Simple math, thank you. Okay, away from hearings and on to basic stuff like license transactions. Having none, no presentations for tonight, town managers' report.
All right, I just have a couple items tonight. Just let you know that our, the town's municipal, municipal vulnerability preparedness program has, has had two very productive sessions, I think. The, the point of this process is to come up with where the town is most vulnerable in the, the event of a natural or man-made disaster and identify the things that, that need to be addressed either before in the planning efforts or during those disasters. So this, as I've said before, the effort dovetails really nicely with the zoning and the comprehensive planning work that's currently underway so that it certainly will be able to inform zoning decisions moving forward and, and also the comprehensive master plan. The point of it is, it's not consultant-driven necessarily. It brings together local knowledge, some predictive climate models and the engineering world to help identify the top hazards, our current challenges, and then the community strengths that we have to develop a priority action plan and improve the municipal, our town's resilience to natural and climate-related hazards. So the little added perk, not the reason we're doing it, but the added perk is that it, it's another effort that we are doing that puts us in a better position to secure some of those grant funds that we talked about as part of the, the, the capital planning program. We've, as you've heard, I think, one of the councilors has mentioned, the planning board has approved the De Bartolo, planning and Concom have both approved De Bartolo's plan to build a facility on Elm Street. And that is, they're doing their preparation work now to get, to get construction started. They have, their contractors indicated that, that he thinks he would, should be able to have substantial completion on that facility at the end of August. I'm not a builder of that scale, so I don't know if that's feasible, but that's pretty aggressive. But the good news there is, is that's well underway and the planning stage is well down the road. And based on that and a number of other things we've been doing, we've recently been getting a number of calls from companies and lawyers and, and representatives, real estate, commercial real estate people, asking about a lot of our different policies and zoning in preparation for hopefully business, more businesses coming into the, the Bridgewater community. And that's, that's good news. So I want to just mention comprehensive plan process. Again, that's proceeding fairly well. We've had a lot of good input so far from, from certain citizens in Bridgewater and, and certain businesses in Bridgewater. We have a planning session, public planning sessions, tentatively scheduled for Saturday, March 23rd. And, and as soon as I can get confirmation of the, that date and the location, we'll be, you'll be seeing a lot of information on that. And certainly, that's, council's invited, everyone is invited to that session. That'll be very instructive for us. And it's designed to get a lot of information from residents of Bridgewater. And all of that goes towards creating the master plan, the comprehensive plan and the master plan that, that we're going to use as sort of our, our guideposts over the foreseeable future. But in any case, we've had much smaller sessions on such things as transportation, housing, open space, cultural resources, economic development. And I think I'm missing one or two. But all of those are in preparation for the public session and the, and the process that goes on beyond that. So if all the timing works out, we're looking at the end of the year to be able to, to wrap up and, and bring to the council what I hope will be a master plan. And actually, I take it back, it doesn't go to the council, goes to the planning board. Obviously, the council will, will be part of that process if for no other reason other than to sort of inform the process and inform the planning board of what your thoughts are about, about that, that document. So that is well underway. I just wanted to mention, I think, hopefully I'm not stealing anybody's thunder, but I know that the planning board and the Community Economic Development Committee have held hearings on the, the table of uses for marijuana in town. And I know that there will come back to the council, perhaps at the next meeting, with some proposed revisions. So in order to make it as efficient and as transparent and as clear as possible, what I am going to propose is, is a first reading for what I think will be the, the special permit criteria and also a second reading for the, the table of uses, as it will likely be amended. We can track both of those things at that point together. Both will have to go to advertising, both will have to go back to, for hearing. And then if all goes well, come back together as a package for the council to then vote on. So that's what I foresee. It'll be obviously a couple of month process. But at least I think, based on what we've done before, we're at a place where we'll have a table of uses that's, that will be amended. And we'll have a special permit criteria, which is, will be required by the amendments to the, the table of uses. We can do those together, track those, advertise them together, and then get them back to the council for a vote together, so that, that there's no confusion there. Although I probably just created more confusion. That's what I do best. The, the only other item I have is I just wanted to clarify, there seems to be some confusion out there regarding the Mitchell School. I think there are a lot of folks that think that it was already voted and we're about to break ground and we're going to do something right now. And, and that is not the case. The, the Mitchell School is a multi-step process. The, the committee and the school board have approved the preferred schematic. The committee and the school board have approved the preferred schematic. That goes to the, has to go to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for approval. They will review that at their April meeting. Once they have approved that, it all comes back, and, and then the, the schematic work continues and we move beyond the feasibility phase. So that is, it's, as I say, it's a multi-step process. As best as I am aware, I believe that puts us, if everything went according to plan, that puts us at a townwide vote, and whatever we do here will be subject to a townwide vote sometime later in the fall, at, at the earliest. So that is the, the process. We have not, no decision has been made, and ultimately, I guess I can assure people that the decision is made by the voters in town, and that won't be until later, later in the fall. So I just wanted to make sure that I clarified that. I'm, I'm not getting on my backhoe and starting any work, so that is what I have. Thank you.
Questions for the town manager?
Go ahead, Bill.
Mr. Wood.
So since you brought up the proposed zoning ordinances, 6.7 miles from this building, there'll be a retail marijuana shop opening probably sometime in the, in the late spring. Is there anything we can do that will stop a Bridgewater resident from being able to travel to that location and bringing marijuana back into Bridgewater?
No.
No? And, and we can't tax that, can we? No, thank you.
Mr. George?
Thank you. So Mr. Dutton, actually, if I had, I didn't want to bring this up during the capital plan, but if I had known Tony was going to leave after that, I probably would have brought it up, and I wanted to bring it up in the right time. So you did, I, I think a very good job of talking about a capital plan, you know, five years down the road. One of the things that, and maybe I missed it, is an operational plan, more so of looking at what we're doing today in regards to revenues for operational purposes and trying to look at it from a different perspective. So what are you talking about, Sean? And I brought this up last year that we, in my opinion, we're still way too conservative on projecting our revenues. So as the numbers show, over the last five years, we've had $9.3 million in free cash. Now, people are saying, well, free cash is a good thing, but I think we've heard, and I think some have agreed, that if you have too much free cash, you're underestimating revenues. That free cash can only go for specific purposes. So it's great to have a good capital campaign, but if we don't have the people or the resources on a day-to-day basis to handle those capital plans, we'll be back to square one very, very quickly. Now, what I'd like to see, or at, at least I haven't heard, but maybe I'm wrong, is discussions around free cash as using that to guide some of the revenues. One of the things that I had thrown out as a suggestion was looking at a five-year average of free cash and taking 60% of that and putting that into an operational budget. Now, the good thing I heard was the capital plan does not take into our reserves. If that calculation comes a little bit short, which doesn't even take into consideration prison mitigation, which I still cannot understand why we do not put that in for recurring revenue because we've never not received it, which is terrible grammar, but sorry. We still are taking the way-too-conservative approach and we're being penny-wise and pound foolish. And we've heard from the public, we've probably heard from people in town as well that aren't here, that services are suffering because we are not able to staff correctly. And I don't want to sit here and really celebrate the fact that we're going to go through a budget process where there's going to be a lot of areas that are grossly understaffed. I am not proposing that we spend money that we don't have. That's why I'm not proposing looking at a dollar-for-dollar free cash and taking that into consideration, but we're using other factors, you know, new car sales, things of that nature to guide the projections. Why not use historic figures and use a conservative approach to that and be able to get more funding sources in so we can put those to our operational expenses? I would really like to see a lot of discussion and a proposal to come that we could do that as well. It is way out of the norm, but we have to start looking at it that way because in the direction we're going right now is not a good one. We've seen this picture before, and it's led to some really bad things, but you know what? It was because people did not take the approach of looking at what we're doing today and trying to make it better for tomorrow. I'd love your feedback on that if you have it.
I, I will say that we definitely don't, I think, I think the finance director's been, been, you know, really good about explaining over the years the, the need to make sure that we're not incorporating free cash, just supplementing budgets with free cash. And I think, I think a best management practice, I think the auditors would agree with, with his, his view that you don't want to be in a position where you're, you're consistently funding operating budgets with free cash. However, I will tell you that we've had some discussions internally about, and, and I think this has been reflected in, in the, the budget resolution, that gives us a little more flexibility so that we're not, not as rigidly tied to revenue estimates as, as, as we have been in the past. So it's an acknowledgement that, you know, we've come out of, of really bad, bad times and we are, our financial footing at least is a little bit more stable. That's certainly not to say that we have a lot of money, but, but it is to say that we have more knowledge and we have more financial footing than we, than we certainly had five or six years ago. So I guess that's, that's sort of a long answer of saying that we have looked at what you're talking about. We are attentive to the fact that especially over the last couple of years, we've had some sizable sort of one-time positive hits that have come in, and those, those have been very helpful for us to be able to just, you know, fund our stabilization at a point where, where we're now comfortable and, and we're a little, but we, we, it allows us more flexibility, I guess, is the, is the bottom line, to be able to, to budget with more, with more, a little bit more liberally, and we can account for some of the, the things that you're talking about. So I guess, I guess we have had those discussions and certainly, you know, we're looking at, he has to sort of, Tony has to beat me back sometimes from, you know, pounding my fist on the table and saying, you know, we've got more revenues, let's, we got to get more revenues here, but, but I think, I think we're, we're trying to do as balanced an approach as possible, but, but I hear what you're saying.
Right, and I appreciate what you're saying in regards to one-time revenues that are significant, but over the last five years, we've had $1.8 million in excess cash on a roughly $55 million budget. Now, again, people would be sitting there saying, well, that's a good thing because we're not in the negative, which has been in the past, which is, which we don't want to do. I still think that that is too high, and that, I'm not trying to bring it down to zero by any stretch of the imagination, but taking some of that into consideration can make a world of difference in areas that have been struggling for years.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. When you sent us the preliminary budget today, I took a look at, and we'll have these discussions as we go forward with, with the budget. And I have some questions and thoughts and concerns about what was, what we started preliminarily today. But I, I think that, just an educated guess, we will probably get another million and a half in free cash in September, it'll happen, there's no question about it. But the budget process is, is a long one, and, and, you know, everybody's got to participate, and there's a lot of needs in, in the budget that we don't tend to focus on sometimes, like the highway department and so forth. So hopefully we can make some progress in that direction. We haven't filled the maintenance position in this building since it's been open, and now we're looking to fund $20,000 for a consultant to tell us how we should maintain the building, so. Some of those things I think we can have discussions about. But what I wanted to ask you though is, how is my old highway barn doing? Has our tests come in yet on the contamination?
We are on track to give you a whole package with soup to nuts on, on the old highway barn.
I, I hope it's a good package because I'd really would like to see something. You talk about our parks and recreation and our, you know, the Town River Landing that's right down there, is, is one of them, and I think that doing something with the highway barn to make it available, I hope for parking, could help, you know, begin the process of going further down to the Town River Landing and develop that a little bit for, let people in, walk around. It's, it's a huge piece of land that we could build a walkway and trail in there and, and have it come out to the, to the Styles and Hart one, I think it is, that's it. So there's, I have a lot of, you know, I have a vision for what we can do if we get that done. But I think that the first piece would be, what are we going to do with that highway barn? And, you know, I was down there, I'm down there every morning, and I drive through there on the weekends, and you have the parking across the street where people that go in for coffee and tend to sit there for an hour or so might get a ticket for their 45 minutes, but yet a little bit further down, there's a, a triple-decker where people are parking on the side of the road and they don't get a ticket at all. So there's a huge need for parking down there, I think. The businesses down there are doing very well. They got four, four thriving businesses down there, and if the corner, the corner of that Roach Brothers entrance there ever gets developed, you'll, it'll really, really be a nice commerce area for the town, but I think parking for customers and the residents are as, is important. So I look forward to that package. Thank you.
Mr. Columbotus?
To what, the notion of estimating revenue, I think, Mr. Dutton, you take a lot of your direction for estimating, projecting revenue from the budget resolution that we've passed, right? So that, the best vehicle for us to convey our sentiment that you should be perhaps less conservative in estimating revenue would be through that resolution, right? So if we think you're, you're not estimating appropriately, we should amend that resolution, and you would take direction from that, is that right?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Wood?
So the budget process is a year-round process, and we meet in September and October to talk about that budget resolution. So it concerns me a little bit that we want to take 60% of an unknown and throw it into the budget. We did put together a resolution, I believe the vote was nine to zero, to support a 1.75% estimated free cash for this year, which amounts to, depending on the bottom number, about $980,000 at least. So we also have a second policy in place, and the second policy in place is a, is a capital fiscal policy, which says that when we have excess, when we have free cash, and the free cash does not need to be used for snow and ice deficit because that's the first thing that comes off the top of free cash, the rest goes into capital planning and supports the plans that we saw tonight. It's my hope that as we go forward, this becomes a, a habit of the council to do these things, the capital plan, the budget resolution, the, the free cash estimate, and whether it's 1.75 or 0.75 or 5%, whatever it is, that the council in the future, when I'm not here sitting in the seat, that the person that is sitting in the seat does that behavior so that we can predict about it. The waves in excess are all over the place. Let's pick one example. Lucini moved their buses from West Bridgewater to Bridgewater. I don't know what the arrangement was before when the bus company was in, at 1,000 Main Street, which is a split property. The agreement was that the excise tax would be paid to the town of Bridgewater. I assume that now that Lucini is out on Elm Street as a whole, that that excise tax is there. If the excise tax did not appear when it was in West Bridgewater and now appears in Bridgewater, it's hard to predict, although the finance department does a pretty good job at picking up those numbers. So it's all linked together and it's, and it's, I guess the question, if I have to pose a question, do I have to pose a question to the town manager? Is there anything in this process that we should change to make it more predictable? Because I think we are doing a pretty good job at predicting things at this point.
No, the, the short answer is I, I think that we're doing a much better job. We're probably almost doing as good a job as we can do to predict as, as we look out. You know, I, if you had all the resources in the world, you could probably do a better job, more precise job of predicting, but I do think we do a fairly good job of, of predicting. So I don't think there's anything more we have to do on that account. But I think, I think to highlight what you're saying, I think the council certainly is a policy, to some extent, it's a policy decision as to, as to giving us the guidance on, on how you want to plod forward with the budget, and, and certainly, you know, we take that resolution to heart each year.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Going back to one of my favorite subjects, the Mitchell School, you mentioned it. And I just want to break it down into like really simple FAQs, so I'm, hopefully these are easy answers for us and don't require a lot of explanation. So the whole process of the town and the district dealing with the state is, as I've called it, a big game of Mother May. You have to say, can we do this? And then they, you, you send them all the forms in and they say, yes, you can go to the next step. And then when you go to the next step, you send them all the forms they want there, and you say, I did all this work, can I go to the next step? And they send off a check and they say, yes. Not a little check money, but a check box. Is, is that, is that a fair assessment?
That's very fair.
Okay, so what, what happened was, so that all, all 10 viewers of us are up to speed, that we had, the, the school applied for, you know, funding to do something about the Mitchell School because of the roof collapse, correct?
Correct.
And that was the eligibility period or something like that it's called, and you had to send in a whole bunch of information. And from that, the state then says, yes, you can go and ask to do a feasibility study. At which point, June of a couple of years ago, we asked the town to vote for $800,000 to do the feasibility study, and they voted favorably for that. So now we, we made it past check one, and now we're into phase two, so to speak, correct?
Correct.
And so now we've got an owner's project manager, we've worked through as a committee in here through quite a bit of meetings, what the committee believes with input from everybody who came to the meetings, from, from our owner's project manager, from the district staff, the committee members, et cetera. We came up with what the committee thinks is the best idea to move forward to the state and say, this is what we think a great idea is. And now the state, that's going to happen next month, I believe, is when we submit it actually, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and then, then the state gets to think about it for a couple months, and then comes back in April and says, yes, you can move forward with this. And at which point, then, we have a lot more work to do in actually designing a building. It's not just a kind of schematic, but it's actually, how are we going to do this? How, how is things going to lay out? What are the construction things, et cetera, et cetera? And at that point, then we can have a real solid estimate of what the cost is going to be, correct?
Correct.
And at that point, we have to ask the voters of the town to say, do you want to pay this amount of money? But, you know, we have an estimate, but we don't know yet, you know, it could be less, it could be more, who knows? But, and, and so if, at that point, when the town voters say yes to that, then we go to another checkoff box with the state, and then we start to move forward with construction, right?
Correct.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a multi, multi-step process, that's what I'm trying to get at. Okay, I, I just want to keep throwing that out to people that it's, it's a long, multi-step process where the state governs how fast you can move.
Yes.
Through the whole thing. Thank you.
Other questions?
All right. Excellent. Committee reports. Hearing seeing zero.
Nope, nope, nope.
Oh, sorry.
Are you skipping over discussions?
No.
Did I skip discussions?
You can just, we don't have any, but just let everyone know we have nothing.
Discussions?
None.
None. Excellent. There we go. Perfect.
Uh, committee reports.
Committee reports.
Hi.
Ms. Loesch.
So yesterday, rules and procedures met to go over the orientation process that we had circulated probably two months ago. And where we are heading into the time where we could potentially have zero to three new counselors, we should be prepared to have an orientation for said people. So we were talking about in our meeting last evening about having it be the first Saturday in May, which is May 4th, having it be roughly about three hours, breaking it down, having speakers from the budget and finance chair, the town manager, the town clerk, just to kind of get them up to speed, introduce them to the town before they get sworn in that following Tuesday. And they're feeling a little bit more prepared on their first day of work, as opposed to what some of us have felt getting on the council, which is a little different. So that's where we are from a rules and procedures perspective, from a strategic planning perspective. Bless you. We have, we met yesterday as well and we are looking to formulate goals for 2019 for the town manager, as well as create a timeline in which how the process should go for the review process every year. So we're not trying to reinvent it every time and ensure that we are following the process and have timelines and milestones throughout the year. So as soon as we get that nailed down, it'll probably be on the agenda as a discussion item for us to continue to ensure that we are reviewing ourselves as well as the town manager and a timely process. Any questions?
No questions. Any other committee reports? Mr. Wood.
Well, I think you've heard everything about budget and finance tonight, but we're on the edge, we're on the edge of our, really two-month effort to go through the detailed operational budget. Budget process really contains four different budgets, four or five different budgets. The enterprise funds are treated as separate budgets and we have to work through those numbers as well. But the main operational budget is the largest one, as you heard, it's around 55 million or something close to that. I haven't looked at, the numbers came in while I was at work today, so I haven't looked at yet. But I wanted to make sure for our, our many viewers, that everyone is invited to every single meeting of the budget finance committee and finance committee when we sit down and talk about the operational budget. We try to be transparent and clear and open as possible. It is a transparent and open process. Every single number is there. Everyone needs to understand that we start with revenue projections first, source of revenues, as some have asked about today. That's driven by the budget resolution. So we decide in fall how big the, how big the bag of money is going to be. And then the town manager works on how he's, how he's going to disperse it. The other thing I want to say about the budget process is this is probably one of the most critical strategic voices that the council has. And although we don't explicitly say in a set of goals for the town manager, it is implicit that we say that we have public safety and schools and other pieces on the budget. And it's critical that those things operationally are executed to the expectation of what we've, what we've set the budget to be. And so I don't know what our current schedule is like. Last year, we met like every other Monday, I think it was, in a joint meeting. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that they're invited to come down. We can explain any part of the budget process. We can explain what the two and a half limits of the process are. We can explain the cherry sheet source of revenue. We can explain the expenditures that we don't control, such as for the T, and how that affects our budget. And we can go soup to nuts on the thing. So everybody's invited and welcome to ask questions, or they can direct questions directly to me. My email is on the town website. Thank you.
Excellent. Other committee reports. Seeing none. Now we go to legislation for action. Moving to order FY19-040 to fix the town clerk salary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
I think we have to put in, I don't think we approved the amendment last time, right? So I'll make an amendment to move the number that Mr. Gallagher had originally suggested from the 69,000 plus to 75,000 annually.
Second.
Motion to amend made and seconded. Discussion on the amendment?
Yes, thank you. So back when Mr. Rivers was on the council and he saw at that point that the town clerk's position was a part-time position. And he was able to convince a majority of the council that that was true and that the adjustment to the salary at that point was more in line with a, with a part-time position. If you look at the population of Bridgewater from the 60s to now, in the 60s and 70s, 70s is when I really started coming to visit my grandparents, the population was really small. But our population has grown dramatically. If you look at the demographics, we're over, we're somewhere just shy of 28,000 people in town now. We're ranked about number 70th on the list, 70, 71, 72, thereabouts. We're no longer a small town. We're in the top third, right? The top third of the towns have professional services running their town clerk's office, the clerk's office. And so we need to view this as a full-time position at this point, a professional position, and pay not a part-time salary, but a professional salary to match the expectations of the office. So that's why I suggested that we bump it up to 75,000. Hopefully, everybody agrees.
Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that finally, you know, we're going to put the town clerk's salary back at a level that to where it was before the previous town clerk was prior to his unexpected passing. I think that the town has always viewed this position as a full-time position. I think that what happened back when the current town clerk was elected was, was wrong. And I think that that wasn't the feeling of all the towns, it was a feeling of probably just a couple that this is or is a part-time position. Just because it's an elected position doesn't mean that they can't, well, they can show up and do what they want to do because they're only accountable to the people that elect them. That's what some people, that's how some people will view an elected position. But I know a lot of people in public service that are elected that really take their job very, very serious, put in the hours, put in, a lot of us put in more time into this unpaid position than, than just coming to a meeting twice a month. So it's what you put into it where the people are going to judge you and say, yeah, they're, they're taking their jobs really, really serious. So I have never, and I think a lot of people in this town have never really viewed this as a part-time position. I'm glad to see the salary is, is at a level that's comparable to a town our size, whether it stays elected in April or not. I think that the salary is a salary for, for that position based on, based on the research that Bill Wood has brought up. So I urge my fellow counselors to support this.
Ms. Loesch.
I think what I remember, this is the third chapter of the story, is that when we did change the salary from 80,000-ish to 40,000, it was because it was an entry levy job and the person had to prove themselves to then continue to get pay raises throughout the role. What I want to be clear is with this change and the changes that we've done prior, are we saying when there's another election and another town clerk, are we going to go back and rate the person on, are they going to get the same salary as this person, this person being Merrily Hunt for this instance has earned? Or are we going to go back and say, well, we haven't tested you out yet, so we're going to put this back down to 40,000 and let's see how good you are to get back up to the actual range that the role requires?
I'll take that one.
Mr. Gallagher.
I think it's, I think it's a good question. And I think that, you know, when you're running for office, whether the job pays zero or you're running for the US Senate or Congress and the job pays 200,000, I think when you're running for a position and you know what the salary is that's paying, that is being paid at the time you're running, my argument would be, well, then that's the salary you should, you should step it, step into. And I know Counselor Wood has brought up several factors that if you, if it's, if we continue to have an elected town clerk, that you're right, you may get somebody elected that has absolutely no government experience and probably, you know, doesn't really know a lot of the laws or any of the laws that a town clerk has to follow through. But that, I look at that and say, that doesn't mean that that individual is not capable. But yes, there is, and part of, one of the scenarios we had over the last couple of years, Counselor Loesch, was we have the administrative study that was done on salaries and the town clerk was in that matrix. And I don't remember off the top of my head what the lowest number was, but it certainly wasn't 40. It certainly wasn't 50. It was, it was somewhere, the lowest one was probably somewhere in the 50s. So if someone's leaving a position that's paying $100,000 and they decide, well, I want to be a town clerk, taking a risk that it could go to 40, you know, that's a tough thing to handle. And that's something we would, whoever's sitting here at the time that happens, would have to discuss. But I'd be inclined to try to keep it at what it is when that person or that group of people are running for that position.
Mr. George.
So I, this is my personal view on the private side coming in. And I appreciate your concern because it's a good one as well. I would expect, and it's not for tonight, if we don't have it already, where the town clerk would have a salary range, your start, your mid, your max. And for someone to come in that didn't have town clerk experience, they should have an expectation of probably around what the min would be. And then as they progress through it, they would be eligible for bumps and things of that nature. So again, I wouldn't expect them to commit at 40. I mean, it's a full-time professional position, as Bill has said. I think the current clerk has shown that, you know, she's not coming in at the beginning now of a full-time clerk. She is a well-established, well-regarded clerk. But for someone coming in, I think it is fair to give them a range, but that range has to be equitable to what that would be if we just hired that person to come in as a clerk. That would be, that would be my approach.
Well, here's your range, $75,000. That's your range. We're hiring a professional. And to think, to Mr. Gallagher's point, I mean, we have fresh faces all over national television that are brand new to, to politics. I mean, I don't think that the Congress got together and said, hey, let's, let's cheapen this role monetarily and cut it in half because they're half as good as we think they should be, or half as good as we thought the other person may have been. So, I mean, it's clearly, we're essentially a city, right? City, former government, 28, nearly 28,000 people. It's a professional job. We are very lucky to have two folks in nearly my entire life, because Ron was here for quite a long time, that did a great job. And yes, when I was a child in the 70s and 80s when Bill was coming around, there were 8,000 of us and 1,200 cows. And now it's a, it's a big deal. And you can't have a kind of, sorry, but nobody's going to come in here that's at a professional level that we need for $40,000 unless they're magically independently wealthy. We're definitely going to increase the level of person and the expectation of that person that would be commensurate with the salary that they would be given. And the idea that we would say, hey, glad you got voted in. Now that 75 is now 40. I don't see that happening and I hope it doesn't. And if I'm not on this side of the table, I'll be on that podium voicing quite a few opinions about it. Any other comments? Mr. Wood.
So it is an interesting HR problem, isn't it? Because you don't really, I don't want to get into debate about, you know, other things, but you don't really get into the process of interviewing a person, looking at the qualifications and experience, which you would do in the private industry, and then say, I have a salary range and you have little or no, you know, experience, but you're still a good fit. So you're going to end up in the lower end of the range or you're a superstar. I can see that. I'm going to push you up into the upper end of the range. Usually in corporations, they set a range and it's very hard to go above or below that. There's all sorts of problems with that. In this case, you know, we do look at the, at the current incumbent and, you know, it's, it's a job well done. So a salary should reflect that, I think. But on the next one, we don't know, right? So we don't know what the expectation is. It would be our responsibility at that point because we, we are the organization that manages, maybe not the office, but manages the salary for the office. It is our responsibility, it could be our responsibility to say, hey, you know, you can't come in for an hour on a July day and go golfing every single day because that's, that's treated as a part-time. Or hey, you can't take the month of August off just because you want to and you don't have to show up at the office every day. At that point, we would probably make a decision to say, okay, maybe it's not a full-time job, maybe it is really a part-time job and we'd back off the salary again. But that's not what we're doing tonight. I think tonight we're just supporting that it's, the 75 is somewhere in the median on that, on that range that we saw out of the study. It's, I anticipate it's going to be hopefully a full-time position throughout regardless of other events. And so we set the pay raise accordingly and, and adjust it later on if we need to.
Other comments? And all those comments were on the proposed amendment.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's vote on the amendment. Did we have a motion made in second? That was the discussion. Okay. So those in favor of the proposed amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed? And now for the main motion to fix the town.
On the main motion, Mr. Rivers?
Discussion on the main motion.
I've heard tonight that the town clerk has done a great job from several counselors. I don't have an evaluation of the town clerk with goals and objectives and how the town clerk met those. If we're going to set the salary, I think we should also have a evaluation process for the person. And I'm throwing that out for discussion. You know, in a future time, but I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, the motion as amended. I just think that, you know, we talked about, Ms. Loesch talked about the town manager's evaluation. We should do it for everybody we set salaries for, including the town council clerk, town manager, and the town clerk.
Yes, Mr. George.
I think your pushback's going to be the evaluation of the clerk is election time. So I, I.
And let's put it on the ballot and let the people vote for the salary.
Well, that's, maybe that's the way we go. I just, I just think you're going to have a difficult discussion in regards to about, the council evaluated an elected official.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. I just throw it out there.
I agree. I agree. I think it's a, it's a ballot, it's a, she, the, the town clerk's elected, let the people evaluate at election time. But when it becomes, if it becomes appointed, then we do have to probably do that as if we're the appointing authority.
Absolutely. Yep.
Other comments? Okay. So now for the main motion, to fix the town clerk's salary at 75,000 annually. Those in favor?
Roll call.
Sorry, roll call vote. My mistake. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colombo.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to order FY19-043, acceptance of non-recurring revenue to capital. And?
Sorry, motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve. Discussion? So, Mr. Gallagher.
Okay, here, here we'll have a little discussion. I know Counselor George brought this up earlier. And my question through you, Mr. President, is to the town manager. The non-recurring, non-recurring revenue. I know Counselor George brought this up earlier and my question through you, Mr. President, is to, to the town manager. The non-recurring, non-recurring revenue, is that a standard term that is used throughout municipalities that receive monies like this, like Concord, Shirley, Framingham, that have host prisons? Is this a, a normal thing that they do?
Um, that's a good question. I can't, I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay, do you, do you, are you, do you know if they include this as part of their revenue forecast in their budget?
Um, I don't actually, I don't know if Tony has any additional information that I don't have.
I can only speak to, if I may?
Sure.
I can only speak to whether the DOR would approve that on a recap as a recurring revenue and, and the answer would be no. The DOR is what determines what we get approved on a recap as it pertains to any local receipt. They also approve the tax rate, the assessments that are done and they confirm that the state aid number we're using, which is to balance our budget, is accurate. This is a supplemental appropriation done by the state and it hasn't been every year since I've been here. There was at least one occasion where it was not approved, that money from the state. And therefore, unless there was some sort of special legislation that would be looking to adopt, we would not be able to use that as an estimated receipt.
Okay, so in the, during the budget process, at what point do we know that this is in an outside section or wherever it is? If it's not in, if it's not in, the only budget that's out right now is the governor's budget. I'm assuming it's not in there. So at what point during the process does it get put in there? And we're accepting that money now for fiscal 19, correct? So what point did we find out that we got it for fiscal 19?
I think we were notified that we received it probably a month and a half ago, something like that.
We received it a month and a half ago.
We were notified that we would receive it, but semantics.
All right. Mr. Wood?
A couple of points to make about this. First of all, the notification's important because it's kind of hard to budget nine months in advance for a payment that you may or may not get from the state. I do recall as, as, as our finance director has said, that there was at least one mispayment and the payment amount is all over the board. It can be high, it can be low, it can't be expected. It's not like every year we get $200,000. I remember some payments were 90 grand. This one seems pretty high to me. But this is also an example when, when constituents call you up or email you or see you at Roche Brothers and say, you know what, the prison doesn't give us any money. This is the money. This is, this is for hosting a prison here in town. We are getting compensation from the state that varies. It's not, not expected all the time, but this is the money that offsets the fact that we have a prison here. So, you know, just keep that in mind next time someone says that. Thanks.
Just, just to continue that conversation, it's nice to be able to say that we've, we received, you know, $254,000. It would also be nicer if we got the 783,000 that another town gets that has a smaller facility, that we've never even sniffed that. I appreciate what the finance director says, but I, I also struggle with the fact that if we haven't got it once, we put the brakes on everything. That to me is what we have to reevaluate our thinking with being fiscally responsible, but also looking, we, we take other factors into consideration coming up with numbers, that's where we have to push the envelope. That's just my general observation. Thank you.
Can I point out one more thing?
Yes.
So, so the target for this money is not additional operational. The target for the money is capital stabilization, which is what enables us again to pay for the items off the capital plan. So it's, it's, you can't budget the revenue in the operational plan that's, that's, as, as Mr. Solomonti said, is non-recurring. So this is the plan, is to take whatever money the state has provided, put it in our capitalization stabilization and we can pay for capital items of it.
Correct me if I'm wrong then, and Tony, please tell me if I'm wrong. In your budget process, you can also budget recurring revenues for stabilization. You can budget it for reserves, correct?
Yeah, we've done it.
You can, right?
Yes, you can.
Right, so what I want to stay away from is free cash is the sole mechanism that we can look at for reserves. There's, there's a lot more to that that we can do in order to have the same results without underestimating revenues to make sure that we have enough free cash to fund things that we should be doing on an operational basis, on an annualized operational basis.
Can I ask one more question then?
You may.
Is this going to be considered free cash? No. So this doesn't even get covered under that subject?
And I, I, again, I'm, I didn't even bring that number into what I was talking about in the free cash bill, but what I'm saying is, we're looking at non-recurring revenue as funding sources for reserves. That shouldn't be the only thing that we're looking at. As a matter of fact, it shouldn't be the major funding source. It should be maybe part of it, but we should also be able to use that money for other things that are coming in. And I'm just looking at it from a historical perspective. And I'm also taking an historical perspective and even discounting it even more that we could do on a forward basis, but every year is different, right? Our, our state aid is different. All of those things are different, which I totally understand. But I think now we're getting into a trend of what we're doing and I'm not saying that we're doing a bad, we're doing a good job, I'm just saying we could do a better job. I guess that's my point.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Um, to Mr. Solomonti, you, you said this revenue couldn't be put on the recap sheet?
Not as a recurring revenue.
Okay, and so?
Non-recur, no, we couldn't budget it because it's not a recurring revenue.
Right, right. So, so when, when, what, what we do with the recap sheet is to send in, here's what our levy limit was, here's two and a half percent more than last year, here's what anticipated new growth is, here's estimated local receipts that are all kind of, and the, and the DOR has, is, is there a better word than guidelines as they review it to be able to say, yeah, that, that number's within what we would have expected and we'll check it off again, going back to the state checking things off for you. I don't know if you were here for that discussion, but they, they have to check off all the numbers to say, yes, you have a balanced recap sheet, your expenses match what your revenue is expected to be.
Yeah, they absolutely, they certify everything and it's even more tight, it's tighter than that. Any receipt where we're estimating greater than the prior year, we better have a very, very good explanation or they're not going to allow us to use that estimate, okay? And they've even come out with directives as it relates to the marijuana dispensary fees and estimating, now they're referring to them as impact, impact fees for marijuana dispensaries and so forth. So there's guidelines that we have to follow.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? And if I'm not mistaken, we go to a vote with that?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving to order FY 19-048, acceptance of a Mass Works grant.
Motion to accept.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to accept, discussion? Mr. Wood?
So this is the coolest news of the night, right? So the Budget and Finance meeting made a, made a motion to recommend accepting $3 million as a grant, which will be used, it's a Mass Works grant and it will be used to offset the portion of the Elm Street project, which will bring down the, the projected cost from six and a half million dollars to about three million, three and a half million dollars, which as, as Mr. Souza pointed out, is partially offset there again by new growth on the street. And as we heard, there's a new warehouse going up potentially, which will become part of our new growth, which this year and next year probably won't impact our revenue stream. But a couple of years down the road, when this debt is, is, is retired, will become part of our revenue stream. So good news here.
Any other comments? Just that I agree, good news. So discussion's done. Roll call vote to accept.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yep.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Excellent. There is no old business, there is some new business. So under new business, FY 19-049, transfer order, other one-time unforeseen expenses.
I'd make a, I'd make a motion to refer both to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
Second?
Did he say move both?
Move both.
There's a motion to move order FY 19-049 and 50 to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees. Motion made and seconded, discussion?
I don't know if you want to hear from the town manager about what's going on.
While we have the open motion, Mr. Town Manager, feel free to inform.
Order FY 19-049 looks to transfer money to fund a couple of, three items. One is the remaining balance that we will need in order to resolve and complete our comprehensive plan and create a master plan with an implementation plan. Essentially, it pays for the implementation plan for that master plan. So I certainly would encourage review of that. We are also looking to do an update to the comprehensive classification compensation survey, which I think was mentioned here. We want to do a much more detailed and a much more inclusive study of that. And so there's money for that. And then finally, there's money that was required to pay for a independent investigative service on a personnel matter. So FY 19-050 is essentially a reclassification. It's not additional money. It's, it's, I should have been clear with that in the explanation, but it's, it's the reallocation of money and, and in the interest of transparency, we wanted to make sure that the council voted this. So it goes towards the paying for a DPW vehicle. I think in a prior order, it was listed incorrectly, so we are giving that. And then the thermal imaging camera is, is something that has taken a higher priority than, than another fire department need that was prior funded. So those are the two things there.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Gallagher?
I mean, should, is, well, we can have this discussion in Budget and Finance, but on order 049, wouldn't it be good to break it into three different projections or I don't, it just seems to be, it seems to read that there's three different things here.
Yes, and I can tell you that we're budgeting $60,000 for the updated classification and compensation survey.
When was that last one done?
Uh, last one, we took delivery in 2015. It was based on 2014 figures. And it was also not inclusive of the police department and fire department personnel. So this is, this will be a townwide study and we'll look at everybody and we'll also look at benefits as well.
It seems to me that the one that we did in 2014 is not that old. And I think that any amendments or adjustments to that could be made perhaps by internal staff. I, we'll have this discussion in Budget and Finance. I think that's an awful lot of money for a report that's really not that old. I don't think departments have really changed that much in, in three or four years. And I think that we should have the professional capabilities within our town resources to amend it without having to spend this money. That's just my thoughts at the moment.
Any other discussion on the motion?
2004, 2019, it's five years?
Yes.
Okay. So not three to?
Thanks for that point of clarification. Okay, so we're still voting to move these together. So discussion's done, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Done. Citizens comments? Anything to come up and say, closing comments for the, the night? Come on up, name, address. Seeing nobody moving, move to council, comments? Mr. Souza, we'll start with you.
No comments.
Mr. Columbotus?
I think so, thanks.
Mr. Wood?
So it's TJ Square time of year. The robotics competition is going to happen, week one is this week. I've been helping the team all season long and the robot is looking pretty good. The drive team has had some practice recently and the software team had zero time to work on it, which is typical of the, of the process. I describe it as the most exciting two and a half minutes in sports. It happens all day long. BR is a host site for the competition. I think 40 teams, 30, 38, 40 teams will be there. Competition is on Saturday and Sunday, the 7th and 8th or 8th and 9th, whatever the Saturday and Sunday is, that's week two of the season at BR. For anyone that's going to drop in, you can literally drop in anytime between like 10 and, and early afternoon to see competitions going on all day long. And it, it works like this, three, three teams on one, on the blue side, three teams on the red side. It's not battle bots, it's, it's 120-pound robots going after cargo hatches and cargo in a space atmosphere and scoring points and it's all gone in two and a half minutes. You get a ranking point, the next, next alliance comes on the field. Very fast, awesome music, awesome time. Ted Head has been there last year, I think, or a year before. So everybody's invited, it's, it's an open day. So hopefully everybody can show up. Thanks.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thanks to those that came out Saturday for my coffee with the counselor. I had 12 people throughout the morning, that's the record. Finally catching on a little bit. We had some good discussions. Most of them were around the Mitchell School project, a lot of them about the roadways in town and a few discussions about the charter changes. So I appreciate those that came out. That's it.
Mr. Chase?
Mr. Dutton made reference to the comprehensive planning meeting that is scheduled to take place on March 23rd. The first, I think, of three such meetings that'll take place over the course of the year. It's something I'm very much looking forward to attending and I would urge all those who are, have an interest in matters related to planning and zoning and the future of our town in that respect, should plan to mark their calendars accordingly.
Mr. George?
Thank you. I just wanted to say quickly, congratulations to the Bridgewater Arena Swim and Dive Team. They did very, very well. Full disclosure, my, my daughter's on the team, but really highlight, we do have a very good team, but we also have an incredibly gifted swimmer with Megan Kramer, who is a state champion again for the second year in a row, different stroke and has All-American consideration. So congratulations to her, the team, the coaches, the staff. It was really good to see that team do extremely well and they've, they've done very, very well every year. So, and I wish luck to all the teams as well, but I just, you know, the one that I pay attention to. So, thank you.
Mrs. Loesch?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Sure. We heard some discussion earlier tonight about level funding budgets and I've always thought of level funding budgets as giving you the same money this year as last year and I don't think that was what was meant. I think what was meant was level services, which means essentially being able to keep everything you had last year and pay for it in this year's dollars. And so I just asked my colleagues on the, on the Budget and Finance Committee, is you guys do the really hard work over the next couple of months to come back to me, here to the council, here to the people in town and be able to explain across the entire spectrum of the budget, be it the, the... of the budget, be it the, the enterprise funds, be it the town funds that we fund out of general government, be it the school department, what type of increases in spending are needed to maintain those level services across all of those spectrums? So that's just, that's just an ask from you, because I think that, that could level set and help a lot of people understand. It's not just getting the same money as last year, it's, it's getting more, but to do the same stuff. Thank you.
Okay. That leaves me. So yes, I played last year at TJ Squared. It's, it's a lot of fun. It's, it's not battle bots, to his point. My son is really super into robots because of this competition, and he was, been a couple of years that he's been going. It's great. And if any folks listening or watching already, you ate over there, some of you already know about it and have been, it's really unexpectedly cool. It really is. I don't know if the town manager mentioned his call for volunteers at the end of the report. Did you do that this, this time? So if.
I did not.
He, he did not. So volunteers, people, there are committees and seats, ways that you can impact the town and help, help this council, help the professional staff move this town forward and do great things. Before I do go, and I know everybody wants to get going, I did have a conversation with my son recently, speaking of my son, six years old, about difference in people's views. He's learning a lot in first grade in the Bridgewater schools, and February's a kind of an important month, that he's learning new things, and he's got a fresh and open mind. And a lot of folks should have fresh and open minds, is what we discussed. And we were talking about people of differing views and opinions and beliefs, and that the best thing you can do as, as a person is to listen to opposing views and beliefs in trying to get inside that, that person's view and find out why they think that way, and why are they impacted by the, the subject matter that you're talking about and why they're on that side? Because in order to effectively make a decision on how you feel about your side, you need to see the other side. And we have two sides to a lot of the things that we're talking about tonight, when we go through the budgets, now it impacts the towns and the families, and not just about the school system, but about fire and protection and sidewalks and everything that we do. There, there's folks for and there's folks against. I just ask that. You, you hear both sides. I, I don't really want to say, let's, you see all that noise in one side, and that blocks the, the communication. So please get yourself educated to both sides of every subject that we hold near and dear to us in Bridgewater. Come here, sit amongst the chairs and participate. You have a chance, twice during every meeting we have, to say your, your piece and to voice your, your side at a pretty intense level that we, we can get here with cameras and microphones and people and nine folks staring right at you. It's a great opportunity to be heard on both sides. That's it. Thank you. With that, a motion to adjourn.
So both?
Second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against?